Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Mayor Tom Barrett, and I want to welcome each and every one of you to our 2022 Executive Budget Public Hearing. What we're going to do is I'm going to turn it over in a few moments to Eric Pearson, who is going to explain the logistics of our go-to system. He'll then turn it over to Patricia Ruiz Cantu, who will also give the instructions in Spanish, and then she'll take it back over to me and to Dennis Jacarino, and we'll begin our evening's entertainment, if you want to call it that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a little bit of feedback from somebody, I'm not sure. Hopefully, everyone can hear me fine. The mayor's presentation will begin in a few minutes. Following that presentation, there'll be a question and comment period during which attendees can ask or submit questions about the city budget. There will be a two-minute limit on attendees asking questions. Before the mayor begins, we want to give you a brief overview of the basic functions in the go-to webinar. And these functions will be available to all attendees. First function is the microphone, and that's represented by the microphone icon. And you will use that to either mute or unmute yourself if you're given an opportunity to speak. The second function is the hand raise, and that's represented by the hand function. You'll use that if you want to ask a question during the question period. An important reminder is, once you raise your hand with the hand function, keep it raised so that you don't lose your place in line. The third function is submit question. If you're on a computer, there's a question section where you can type in your question. If you're on a phone or tablet, there should be a question mark icon, which you can select in order to type in a question. And use the submit question function if you do not want to speak, but you do want to submit a question about the budget. If you want to ask or submit a question, just use that hand raise or submit question function during the question section, and then the staff will recognize you, so you can ask your question, or staff will read your question to the mayor. And before the mayor begins, just some reminders. When you're not talking, please self-mute using the microphone function. Speak slowly and clearly. Attendees who wish to speak, please alert staff using the hand raise function. And again, once you raise it, keep it raised. Use the question function if you want to submit a question. When you're recognized, you should be unmuted. If not, make sure you use the microphone function to unmute yourself. Please state your name and your address before speaking, and also express yourself with respect and civility. We also have instructions for Spanish-speaking attendees, so I'll turn it over to Patricia, who can provide those instructions.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Patricia Ruiz Cantu, y muchas gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Esta noche ustedes van a poder escuchar lo que es el presupuesto. También van a poder hacer sus preguntas. Van a tener un límite de dos minutos por pregunta. Si ustedes quieren hacer su pregunta, levanten su mano. Como ustedes pueden ver, en el botón en su teléfono o en su tableta está la función de la mano. Levanten su mano y mantengan la mano levantada hasta que los llamen, porque si usted baja la mano, va a perder su lugar. Es importante también que está el micrófono. Usted puede quitarle el mudo y estar dispuesto a hacer su pregunta. Cuando termine su pregunta, asegúrese que nuevamente apague el micrófono. Es importante que si usted tiene la oportunidad de hacer su pregunta, diga su nombre, su dirección, y que usted se presente con responsabilidad y con respeto. Vamos a darle una presentación pequeña acerca del presupuesto. Si usted tiene preguntas, puede también estar en la página, en el chat, puede poner su pregunta, y yo puedo decírselas, traducirlas, y voy a estar aquí a su disposición. Cualquier pregunta o lo que usted necesite puede escribir ahí, y yo lo puedo traducir. Ahora le paso al alcalde, Tom Barrett.
Gracias. Yes. Well, what we'd like to do now is I'm just going to take a couple of minutes and sort of go through our five-step process. Each year, we enact a budget for the following year. And this process actually begins very, very early in the year. And I think sometimes people are a little bit surprised because there's a lot of people who are tired at the end of the year when we finish the budget, and it's literally only weeks later when we begin to work on the next budget. So as you can see, the preparation begins in February and really continues through March. I'm sorry, through May. And what we do during that period is Dennis Jacarino, who heads our budget office, he and his staff, they prepare budget requests describing funding that they need. And they actually ask the departments to help work with them so that the departments themselves can prepare budget requests describing funding they need to operate and provide services at high quality. So again, oftentimes, we'll be sending something out to them, giving them some parameters as to what we think is feasible for the next year, and they will respond, and they'll, again, they'll describe the funding that they need. Sometimes it's a cost to continue. Sometimes it's with some cuts that we have mandated. Sometimes it's going to be with increases. So that usually is what happens during the springtime. Then when summer hits, and this is the period we're in right now, we spend a lot of time first working with the budget, with the budget office. I've had many meetings with the budget already, going through the different conversations they've had with the departments. And so following this, I will then sit down with many of the key departments and try to find out exactly if they're on the same page of the budget. Yeah, usually they are, but not all the time. And so there might be times when a department head will say, well, this just simply isn't going to work. Let's take it to the mayor, and then we'll sit down and have a pretty collaborative process. This is also the period where we want your input. Again, this document is nowhere near in its final form right now, and it's important for us to have public input. And this public input is actually mandated by state law. We are required to have a public hearing prior to the submission of the budget. But I think it's good public policy to have it as well, to hear from people and see what they think is important. This is our formal budget hearing, but there are also going to be conversations that we have throughout the summer with various individuals, various organizations, about the priorities and what we see as most necessary to be included in the budget. So this will take us basically through the end of this month and the first couple of weeks of next month. And then maybe September 10th, then things start getting a little nerve-wracking because that's when we, as we describe it, put the budget to bed. And that's when, based on the input from residents, from city departments, the common council, we actually take this budget, take it to the printer, and have it printed. And that's the form in which we present it to the common council. So that will occur, I think roughly September 18th, or somewhere in that area. That week, maybe the third week of September, we'll present it to the common council. What happens next then is that the Legislative Reference Bureau and the Alderman take about a week, a week and a half, to really study the work we've done. Think of it as they're correcting the papers that we've submitted to the teacher or the professor. And so they'll take that last week of September, and they'll review the documents that we have submitted and the budget document itself. Then in October, the public period starts again because that's when the Finance and Personnel Hearings will begin. And I believe that they are going to hold their first hearing on roughly October 1st. And they've already mapped out all the different departments. Again, we do this each year, so we sort of know what the rhythm is. And they'll bring in the Police Department, they'll bring in the Library, they'll bring in the Health Department, they'll bring in the Department of Public Works, support all the different departments, and they'll pepper them with questions about the submittals that they have. And so that oftentimes can be a pretty lively event. There's a second opportunity then for the public to be involved, and that will be on Monday, October 4th, at 6:00 p.m. That's the joint public hearing where I attend as well as the common councils, council members. And we are in listening mode for that evening, so it won't be as interactive as we have here tonight. But that's in listening mode where residents can get up and give us their opinion of the budget. I will say that the last couple of years have been pretty lively, and I think that's just a reflection of our times. A lot of people have come to these budget hearings, and I think it's good for people that have their input. I think it's good for democracy for people to be involved. So again, through the bulk of the month of October, the Finance and Personnel Committee again will hold hearings. And then right at the end of October, October 29th, it will have budget day. And again, this is usually a pretty packed day for the Finance and Personnel Committee because the members of the committee will consider all the amendments that will be presented to the budget. And they will make what I would call recommendations. They'll either adopt them or reject them. And then it goes to the final budget adoption, which will be Friday, November 5th. And at that time, the priority is given first to those amendments that were adopted by committee. But members of the common council can bring back amendments that were not adopted at council. And there's different rules as to how those can be considered, but those can be considered that day as well. And so I anticipate that sometime on Friday, November 5th, we will have a budget. And then it comes back to me, and I look at it, and I can make vetoes, or I can choose not to make vetoes. If I make vetoes, it goes back to the common council one last time for them to consider whether they're going to override those vetoes or sustain those vetoes. Once that is done, then we start working with the comptroller, and we start working with the city treasurer to have everything finalized. The budget is done at that point. But then the next key step in this whole process is that that tax rate, which is established by the common council, will then go into the property tax bills that we send out in the first couple of weeks in the month of December. So again, you can see that this whole process takes essentially 10 months of the year, and it's a busy time for everybody as we get closer and closer to that, particularly the end of October, early November. So with that, I'm going to pause now and turn it over to Dennis, who's going to talk about a couple of the different aspects of it, and actually, where the money goes. We want, we want to have a little education here as to where the money goes, what the priorities historically have been, where we spend the most money, and what some of the challenges we have. So Dennis and I will sort of be kicking it back and forth between each other right now. But for the next three slides or so, Dennis will explain a little bit more of the budget in detail. So with that, Dennis, I'm going to turn it over.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Eric. This is a chart that shows where the property taxes go. Now, this is only one portion of our revenues, but it is the most, one of the most more recognized revenues that we do get. As you can see, a lot of it goes to departments, nearly 40%, but a big chunk also goes to pensions as well. What I'd like to comment about here is the pie itself is controlled by the state. So we can only increase the pie by a little bit per year. But in the future, the retirement portion of the pie is going to expand dramatically as we move forward. And that's going to put pressure on the other categories and make their slices of pie a little bit less based on where we're headed at this point, although we're looking for solutions for that, so that doesn't occur. But that's how this pie kind of works. Next slide. Here's the other additional revenues that we get. As you can see, we also rely heavily on intergovernmental revenues, with a big portion of that being shared revenue. And we'll show a chart on what the issue with the shared revenue is in a few slides from now. But there is pressure there because that does not increase, and it'll become clearer in that slide. But you can see there's a lot of different things that we charge for licenses, permits, user charges, and so forth. And all this goes into making up the city budget. Next. This gives you a taste for...
Jump back to the other part. I think it's important for people to have a better understanding of the TID increments section, as well as the pilots. What are those two slices? Those really account for about a sixth of the budget, or at least...
The TID increments, when we create a tax incremental district, it gets cordoned off for the incremental value. So basically, what you do is when the TID starts, they create a base level of value. Anything that grows above that value is called the increment. And then the taxes, based on the rate that we use to set up the budget, then accumulates incremental revenue for the TID, and then that goes to pay off the TID. The other debt revenues are related to, some of it's more of an accounting offset with cash flow borrowing. So that shows up here. And there's also a part with delinquent taxes, on how we finance delinquent taxes. So those pieces all go into that pie of 15%. Pilots are, we work with tax-exempt properties and also with the Water and Parking Fund, and they pay taxes that if they were taxable, they would pay a certain amount of taxes. And that's what we charge to the Water and Parking Fund, which makes up most of that. There's also some in there for Hackham properties, but the majority is Water Department with a smaller amount coming from the Parking Fund. Licenses and permits are pretty straightforward. They're for all of the licenses that you have to get to sell certain things or do certain things. The permits are related mainly to buildings. Fines are related to those municipal court-type fines, and those actually make up a much smaller piece. Most of the revenue does come from the licenses and permits. The Tax Stabilization Fund is basically city reserves, and we do use a little bit of reserves. In 2021, we used six and a half million. But that we are paying close attention to because we have faced the need to use some tax stabilization funds in the past, so there isn't as much as we would like to have available, and we are working hard to control that. Fringe benefits is merely just an offset as it states there. Miscellaneous, there's vehicle registration. Interest earnings we have in there are some of the major ones. The Potawatomi Casino makes us a payment, that's part of that revenue as well. Capital that we're talking about there is really related to borrowing. It is a method to finance. What we do then is we borrow, and then you'll see that it turned into debt later on. And then the debt we pay as part of the tax levy later on or as part of the tax incremental costs and other debt revenues that you saw in the blue slide there. And we went through property taxes before. The user charges are made up of, the municipal service charges make up a portion of that. There's other user charges for Department of Neighborhood Services for their inspection fees and other things like that. So that makes up a significant part of the revenues that we had to look into, really hard to make some tough decisions because it's one of the few areas where we can raise some rates. But I should make clear that we can't really make a profit here. The state law requires us to only charge what the cost of that service is. Next slide. Here, we'll talk a little bit more about the departments. This looks at just the tax levy-supported departments against each other. So it's a little different than your charts you might have seen in the past, where we put it as a total section. We did find out when we did that, it kind of didn't add up altogether. So this was an effort to simplify how we presented it. It isn't a chart that we're trying to do anything with. I know some of you may have seen the Police with a higher percent before, and part of that was because the chart in itself actually added to 106% in the past. So this one, we're doing much more straightforward. It's an easy one to calculate as well, but we're doing department comparisons only here. All of the fringe benefits and all of the costs for the departments are included in this analysis. So this is how we spread costs amongst the departments. And as you can see, the Police do make up the largest percent of this section of the budget. The Department of Public Works comes in at about 19% and Fire at 18%. As you can see, those three at the bottom note are about 80% of the budget. What I do want to point out, though, is some of the other departments, especially like in the Health Department, do receive a large number of grant funding that does not appear in this chart as an expenditure because this is all levy or revenue-based. It does not include grant funding. So in most cases, well, the Health Department normally, on a normal basis, would receive about double what they get from the operating budget. But since COVID, they have gotten a much larger amount, and we are looking at other funds that we have gotten from the federal government. So a more significant amount of the Health Department will be funded with grants. And last year, the Health Department was quadruple the size that it was in the operating budget when you add all of the grants together. But you can see the other sections of the budget. We, other, there is just a few smaller departments, but you can see where the funding goes. The next slide shows the top 10 departments. And as you can see, the Police is the higher amount. I can point out that most of that, 90% or so, is salary and fringe benefits of the Police Department. It goes mostly into officers and staff like that. There are some administrative staff, but the focus is on maximizing sworn strength where we can. DPW, you'll see, those are all the services, like garbage collection, snow and ice removal, the street light repair. Those kind of things are all funded there. Fire Department is the, obviously, the fire end of it that you do see where they put out fires. But there's also a much larger part with the medical services that they provide. 80% of the Fire Department is now medical, when it used to be a much higher percent fire-related. The Library will contain the main library, the downtown library, as well as 12 branch libraries. So that makes up the library with all of their services that are provided, and not only just the books, but the digital information and also the other training that they do provide and services that they provide to help citizens out. Department of Neighborhood Services makes up a relatively large amount, and that's really to enforce building code, as well as provide permits and make sure things are built according to the code, so we're a safe city. Department of Administration does a lot of things, and it's probably not the best of titles to just lump a whole bunch of things in this administration. The budget is in there, our intergovernmental relations, purchasing. The biggest part is our computer people, which we refer to as ITMP, which is the, they handle all of the systems related to the city operations on computers. So if my computer today goes out, I'll have to give them a call. The Health Department, like I did mention before, does receive a lot of grant funds. And here, though, the actual budget from the levy and supported by revenues was 12.9 million last year. But like I said, there was nearly another 50 or so million provided through the federal government last year, in addition to other grants that they normally receive. The City Clerk is basically the Alderman, and there are some services that they provide beyond service, beyond, sorry, beyond the Aldermanic services. So their budget ranges there. City Attorney is a significant expense as well. And then you have the Department of City Development, which does OTIDs and development. But they also handle a lot of our housing things passed through their department, and they've been receiving some additional funds to also help with small businesses as we have gotten some federal money for that. And there will be a candidate for more additional funds to improve housing from the federal money that we... Let's go to the next slide.
So here's where you see what our long-term problem is. As you can probably tell, the red line, maybe you can't tell, so I'll explain it. The red line is the amount of money we receive from state government. That's the shared revenue number. And the shared revenue number, the story I'll tell about this is, just in the last few days, I was at an event where an individual stopped me and said, "Boy, the city must be doing great right now." Because the Bucks won the championship, you're obviously getting a lot more money for the city coffers. And I said, "I wish that were the case." Because even with all the people coming to the Pfizer Forum, all the people coming to the bars and restaurants downtown, all the money that's being spent, we essentially share little of that money. The money they're paying is going to go towards the sales tax, and it's the state that gets a bulk of the sales tax, and county gets a smaller amount. We do not get, as a city, any of the sales tax. In addition, to the extent that, for example, the Bucks gave a lot of money, and the income taxes that they pay, that goes all to the state, now that it comes to this city. So what does that mean? If you go back over 100 years in our state's history, we did have the ability to tax incomes. We did have the ability to tax taxes, have things like that. I should say we're prohibited by state law to do so. But in the early 20th century, the state legislature's government, they would take away that ability for us as local governments to issue these taxes. But it was a partnership, because what they said was, "Well, what we'll do is we'll collect the taxes, and then we'll share them with local governments." Thus, the shared revenue, that the state would collect the money, and it would share it with local governments. As you can see from this, if you go back to 2004, and the amount we received, which looks like about $203 there, and then it took a dip when we had the Great Recession. And now here we are in 2021, and it's a little bit lower than it was 20 years ago. And so you might be thinking, "Well, maybe the state's having problems." I'll get to that in a minute. But if you look at the blue line, you'll see what we've had to do to compensate for that. In 2004, the amount we received from the state was about $30 million more than what we obtained through property taxes. But fast forward and watch the blue line go to 2021, and you can see now that that number's gone from $200 million to $300 million, and the amount we received from the state is fixed or a little bit lower than where it was. That is our unsustainable fiscal model, and why I've been working hard with the business community and others to try to take a hand for us. Allow us to raise a little bit, because you're not going to share it, you're not going to share it, I like that. But then, you're going to save the deal, take hold of that, and allow us to raise money. But take away money you were taking, no, it was going to be pretty much. So through the next slide, I'll take a little bit of fashion. Eric, you can push my head, please. We need the next slide, please. Here we go. So as I said, maybe maybe someone would say, well, the reason you're not getting more from the state is because the state's hurting as well. Well, I think the best thing to do is let's take a look at the numbers. Go back to that and don't go back, but here's how much the state received in general purpose revenue. In two thousand three, two thousand five, it was twenty two point nine billion dollars. Fast forward to two twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one, it has gone to thirty six point nine billion dollars. So you can see it has had over a fifty percent increase in the amount of money that the state has received through income taxes, sales taxes and other taxes. At the same time, if you look at how much we've received, it has gone the opposite direction. Particularly when you add in what we call the the IRP payment, which is a payment to help us control our taxes. So the state's revenues are going up, our revenues are going down. That's why we have a fiscal crisis. Let's go to the next page, please. But we have a second problem that that is becoming more and more serious. And it's one that I think all of you should be aware of as well. Again, we're going back to two thousand four. As you can see, in two thousand four, the blue area is basically the tax levy. This area here is going to be the debt we have, the debt service. So the blue area is how much we spend on our day to day services, on police, on fire, on things like that. And as a percentage of the total tax levy. So again, this, the blue section is the operating portion of our budget. The white section is the debt we have. So as you can see from this, we had, we have had in two thousand four, I'd say between seventy and seventy five percent of our tax levy went to pay for government and twenty five percent, twenty to twenty five percent, went to pay off debt. Now, here's the problem we face this year. This year, only forty, basically, it looks like about forty two percent of what we collect goes to pay for our government. This portion, which is the debt service, is is higher than it was, but it's as a percentage, it's not overly high. But the real kicker is now we are paying towards the employee, the employer portion of the pension. So here's the problem. If you take the red area and the white area, that's well over fifty percent of of the amounts that people pay in their taxes. That's going for two things that you don't see. It's going towards the pension and it's going towards debt service. Only about forty three, forty four percent roughly, it looks like from this picture, is going to pay for the services we have. Looking at it one last way, in in two thousand four, we spent a hundred forty five million dollars on all the different things that we had there. Again, this is basically as a percentage, and that amount is actually lower in two thousand twenty. So let's go to the next slide. To make this even more dramatic, this shows you the the flat line that goes through twenty twenty two is the amount that we are paying towards the pension right now. We anticipate in twenty twenty three that that amount is going to go from approximately eighty million dollars to a hundred sixty million dollars. Now, the city portion of that will be less than a hundred fifty million, but you can see there's this dramatic increase. So that's why we're trying to get the legislature's attention to help us deal with this and give us some options. This is a, again, a very serious problem that we're facing going to the future. So let's go to the next slide, please. Dennis, I'm going to bounce it back to you because you're the guy that's received these different requests. So why don't you explain what each of them is?
Sure. The like the mayor mentioned way at the start that we do receive the budget requests from departments in May. And as we receive them and added everything up, there is rather large increases based on their requests. These will not be the final budget numbers, but I did want to show you what what the departments did submit. And in many cases where you see the line departmental budgets, they're pretty close to what the the cost to continue budget would be. What I mean by that is if the services they provide this year, if they had to estimate what it cost in twenty twenty two, the the cost would increase by twenty six point nine million to do the same thing. So that's where one of our big challenges is as well. And the mayor did run through a number of slides that shows our revenues are down. So that makes it very difficult to to support. We end up supporting very little of this increase in the end, because there just isn't revenue to support it. But let me go through all of the all of the numbers. The total budget that came in was one point seven billion. It was up a hundred sixty point eight million or ten point four percent. The levy would would be three hundred seventy seven million if if accepted the way it is, which would be up seventy eight point four million or twenty six percent. And a lot of you will be thankful you're not going to see that tax bill or that number. We are working to get that one down and it will be significantly down. I should also point out that the state government would not allow us to increase it anywhere close to that number. They do cap our levy growth, which is tends to be in the two and a half to three percent range rather than the twenty six percent you see here. Healthcare, we've been doing good for years. It's probably the biggest success in our budget over over time. This year, the request is five point six million. But after we looked at some of the costs coming in, it's likely going to be less than that. But we're still working with our Employee Relations Department on that. Debt service is up just a little bit. We do control our borrowing in the capital budget. We limit it to about eighty three to eighty five million dollars on an annual basis. That the reason we do that is so this part of the budget doesn't become bigger. As the mayor showed you that slide before, we're with the white bar and the and then the pension portion eating up more of that section. So the attempt here is to to control how much this increases by controlling the borrowing. And doing that, then we will have more that we can devote to the operating budget of those services that you see. The wages supplement fund or the the settlements, this is just a projection at this point. And and we just have that in the budget request, but that is significantly higher than it had been in the past. And we'll be reviewing that number as well. Next slide. As you all may know, it's Budget Awareness Week, my favorite week of the year. And the first annual, I'm hoping, Budget Awareness Week. It took me thirty six years to get my own week, but I'm really happy about it. So I hope you join us in the in the activities and and also see what we do and we do want to hear your voice. Next slide. This next slide has a little bit of the days in it. Wednesday, these are the future days. I did not include today's date. But moving forward to tomorrow, we will be at Crystal Ray High School with both Spanish and English available. And we will be showing you how we kind of do the budget, how we make some choices. I believe it'll be very informative, so if you can make it, love to have you there. Thursday, we're going to meet and talk about the American Rescue Plan and and the mayor's proposals that he has for for use of those funds. So that'll be another important date because there is a significant amount of money there. We do want to hear your voice there as well. Friday, we're going to ask everybody to make sure that they fill out the Budget Priority Survey Challenge. And that will go into helping us prioritize the budget and set up the budget. So we'd appreciate that. And then on Saturday, we're going to have one more budget exercise at Employee Milwaukee where you can learn how we work on budgets. Somebody referred it to me as making sausage at one point in my life. But it hopefully will be a lot clearer to you. And I hope you can show up because I'd love to walk you through this stuff. Next slide. And then finally, just another reminder to to take the survey if you can. And then I think I'll turn it to Eric with a few more housekeeping things.
Thanks, Dennis. That concludes the formal presentation, but we'll be moving into the question section of the evening. And just some reminders, again, on go to, if you haven't raised your hand yet, you want to ask a question, use the raise hand function. If you want to submit a question that we will read to the mayor and you don't want to ask it directly, use the question function to submit that to the staff. And we'll try to get through all the raised hands and all the submitted questions as quickly as we can and in hopefully the order that they come in. But please do that now so that you can get in line for your questions. And then again, just a final reminder again, when you're not talking, self mute with the microphone. Make sure you use the raise hand function to let staff know that you have a question and want to ask that question or submit a question with the submit question function. And when you're recognized, go hear your name read out. Just make sure you're not muted, state your name and address before speaking, and then just try to express yourself with respect and civility. And that's all I have. So I think we're going to turn it over to Bill, who will start going through the questions.
Thank you, Eric.
Una vez más.
Go ahead, Patricia.
Una vez más, se le recuerda que si quiere hacer su pregunta en español, levante su mano y le quita en mute y nosotros vamos a poner su pregunta y yo voy a traducir. Si usted quiere escribirla en el chat, escribala y nosotros vamos a preguntarle la pregunta al alcalde. Ahora sí, veo, gracias.
Thank you, Patricia. So we're going to start with the spoken questions. So what I'll do is I will let whoever is up next, I will let them know. And then I'll also identify who the next person up is going to be. So and we're going in order of how the hands were raised. So first, we're going to start with Ben Turk. And next up is going to be Ashley Edgerson. So Ben, I'm going to unmute you and you should be on. Looks like you might be, you might have muted yourself, Ben.
Okay, thank you. So we've been hearing a lot from people, from police and then advocates about a supposed rise in violent crime. But those numbers are based on unreliable data because the police are generally not good at fighting crime or doing public safety. So their numbers are mostly speculation. What the police don't want people talking about, but that can be accurately tracked, is how much time police spend doing what. And so that's my question. What percentage of Milwaukee Police Department work hours are spent not on answering calls but on going on patrols or doing other officer initiated interactions like issuing minor municipal violations? In other words, harassing people and extorting money from them, particularly racially targeted harassment and extortion.
So let me jump in on that, Ben. I appreciate the question very much. One of the things that we do track, and I think that this is something that can be quantified. There are certain things that cannot be quantified, but there are certain things that can be quantified. And tragically and unfortunately, one of the things that is most easily quantified are the homicides in the city of Milwaukee. And so I think it's, this is something that I receive every every weekday. I receive a report from the police and the number of homicides in the city and the number of non fatal shootings in the city. And it's broken down by police district. So to put this in perspective, in two thousand nineteen for the full year, we had ninety seven homicides in the city of Milwaukee. That was the fourth year of a four year period in which we saw declining homicides every single year. Two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, our homicides went down every single year. And again, in two thousand nineteen, it was ninety seven. In two thousand twenty, the number went from ninety seven to a hundred ninety. So basically close to a hundred percent increase in one year. Now, this year, homicides to date, which is again where we are right now, we are below last year. And for a while, we were above last year, but our homicides year to date are a hundred and eight compared to a hundred and ten last year on this date and compared to fifty five on this date two years ago. And we get these every year, so it's not like they can doctor the figures, you know, historically. Non fatal shootings tells a very similar story, although actually the numbers are worse here than they were last year. And just to cut to the chase, our non fatal shootings are up thirty one percent over last year. And they're up a hundred twenty nine percent over two years ago. So we have, we have a serious problem there. In addition, as you may have seen just in the last, if you watched the news in the last twenty four hours or forty eight hours, we've got a very serious problem in the city with reckless driving. We've had several incidents, I don't call them accidents because I don't think they're accidents, in the last two weekends where people were drag racing on city streets and ended up in innocent people getting killed. So a lot of our resources go to to those incidents. I'm not going to say the police are perfect because the police aren't perfect. But I will say that we've got some serious problems here when it comes to public safety. And I would love to be able to figure out a way for us to deal with them more inexpensively and more effectively. But I I'm not going to quarrel with your assertion that that some numbers are not accurate numbers. But again, these are numbers that essentially have to be submitted to and verified by the FBI as well. So I I don't like these numbers, but these are the numbers that we're dealing with. And that's one of the reasons that we put a lot of resources in the police. Now, we can make the argument that that's not the effective way to deal with crime. I I just want to have less reckless driving. I want to have less violence in the city. And so I'm certainly open to whatever we can do to get there. Thanks for your question.
Next up, we had Ashley Edgerson. It looks like she has dropped off of the meeting. So Ashley, if you come back, raise your hand and we'll get back to you. So next up, we have Marquesa Tucker Harris, followed by Vaughn May. So Marquesa, I'm going to unmute you and the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Marquesa Tucker Harris and I live in President Chevy Johnson's district. In two thousand fourteen, I remember sitting at home and watching the news and hearing that a black man named Dotree Hamilton was shot and killed in broad daylight by Milwaukee Police Officer. And unfortunately, just yesterday, I heard about another black man, Broderick Shelton Jr., who suffered mental health issues, who was also killed by police yesterday. I remember when Dotree was murdered and his family would show up to Red Arrow Park asking the community to come out and support their fight. And one day I finally did. I supported their fight for justice and police reforms because I knew something was terribly wrong with what happened to Dotree. I've realized in just over five short years that our police reform efforts weren't what would actually keep us safe, nor would police reforms create pathways to what our community truly needs, which is healthy people in healthy, sustainable communities. We have suffered too long under violent and wicked rules. And according to Proverbs twenty nine and two, when the uncompromisingly righteous are in authority, the people rejoice. But when the wicked man rules, the people groan and sigh. The people of Milwaukee are groaning and sighing, and it is time for the people in our city to thrive and rejoice. In two thousand nineteen, the community stood up and demanded something different. It wasn't just the times, Mayor, it was our organizing. And we demanded a twenty five million dollar divestment from police because we knew police haven't and they won't keep us safe. It's time for the people to thrive and rejoice. We demand you divest seventy five million from MPD and invest those resources into what we will know will keep us safe, like mental health services, the support for our community around trauma. Because we know that policing, poverty, white supremacy and systemic racism is what leads us back into these traumatic traumatic cycles. It's time for the people to thrive and rejoice. We demand you divest seventy five million from MPD and invest in community led cooperative housing and put real decision making power into people's hands through a participatory budgeting process. It's time for the people of Milwaukee to thrive and rejoice. It's time to liberate MKE. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marquesa, for your comments. I've been very supportive and I continue to be supportive of putting resources into mental health. I will continue to do that. I work as closely as I can with the county to, because obviously they deal with a lot of mental health issues. I continue to support efforts to put more money into housing because I think that's a big part of this. I'll continue to put more money into employment opportunities because I think that's a big part of it as well. At the same time, I don't have anything that I can say to the parents of the two people who were killed because of the drag racing two nights ago or to the families of the two people who were killed in drag racing last weekend. I don't think taking police off the street to try to control reckless driving is going to make it a safer city to drive. If I did, I'd do that, but that's the challenge I face is talking to the families as I did last weekend. One of the young men who lost his life and I talked to his sister and his mother, and they asked me to do what I could to help control reckless driving, and I feel I have a duty to try to deal with that issue as well. That's for the next question.
Okay, next up, we have Vaughn Mayz, followed by Montreal Kane. So Vaughn, I'm going to unmute you. And you can unmute yourself and then feel free to ask your question.
Good afternoon. Vaughn Mayz, community activist, founder of Program of Parks, MKE, and Community Task Force, MKE, also known as Conforce. And I echo some of the sentiments of the folks before, myself, just asking and demanding really that, you know, there have been several budgets cycles that the people have put forth, ask and demand, and I don't believe that that has been followed. And so participatory budgets, I second that from Queen Marquesa. Also investment in community first responders and community resident led violence prevention efforts. We do not have to rely on the police for a lot of this stuff, but you have to empower people. You have to incentivize people's participation in their own saving. And that can't happen if we have folks delegating and restricting who can be a part of that process and who can't. There are folks out here doing the work who are unsupported and that's not right. That's also a form, a form of violence because there are crooks and crevices that police and that these mainstream organizations cannot get into, no matter how hard they try. And that those are lanes that some of us are best at. So divesting some of these responsibilities from the police department to free them up, to address some of the more pressing issues like these homicides, like these deaths from stolen cars, things of that nature, freeing them up so that they have the resources, manpower, and the freedom and flexibility to deal with those issues while finding a front end prevention and deterrent efforts from other avenues, other people with, with other skill sets, such as somebody dealing with these mental health calls and things of that nature, which we've had even police chief candidates say that they would, you know, deter or dissuade the police department and support, you know, people who are trained and equipped to do that work. I think those are ways that we should be going towards. We should not be looking to further pile things up on the shoulders of the police department.
20 seconds, Vaughn.
All right. And, you know, that's, that's my thing, community empowerment, community, you know, leading of some of these efforts, community involvement. We need to be heard. We need to be listened to. And it's been a number of years that we've asked and demanded that things be done with our tax dollars that have not been done.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Okay, next up is Montreal Kane, and then we're going to go back to Eric for some of the written questions. So Montreal Kane, I'm going to unmute you right now. And if you go ahead and unmute yourself, the floor is yours.
Hello, this is Montreal Kane. I am the founder of MIRA Wisconsin, which stands for Monitor, Engage, Recommend, and Advocate. We are a preventative care mental health service and we have a crisis intervention unit. We currently have 41 African American culturally competent state licensed therapists who are standing by on call to answer mental health emergencies along with 31 community based crisis intervention trained responders. We're asking for a small percentage, 1% of the mayor's budget to be advocated. And when I say the budget, not the total sheet you share today, but ARPA, $3.94 million to support 875 families. We have evidence based research. We have sent an email or two out to your office. We've met with several other persons and we would love to figure out what is the proper protocol to schedule a meeting with you as soon as the next two weeks where we can give you our presentation, show you our evidence based research and relieve the pressure that we're piling up on police departments that aren't properly trained. Understand as a musician, if I practice a song for one year, I will forget it in two years. So if you only do crisis intervention training, let's say once every five or six years, it's not going to stay fresh with you. And as you saw yesterday on 27th and Capitol, there was a young man who actually had relationships with the same police officers that shot him. And if you notice some of the things that we're seeing that's coming across the news, these de-escalation tactics do work. Eugene, Oregon, Kahoots model is a great model and $66 million of the police budget was advocated to the Kahoots model to make sure that there are first aid responders who are mental health crisis, train EMTs and nurses that can go out. This is things that have been proven and we started this program over three years ago and we're excited to answer that call. And guess what else? When you call Milwaukee County and you call the Crisis Mobile Team or CART, they punch out at 12 o'clock on the weekends and that's 12 o'clock AM and they start back up on, at 7:40 AM. We work 24/7. We are reliable and we are prepared to answer that call. And Mayor Barrett, you're a bright guy. I've met you so many times. You see me with my red camera in my hand.
20 seconds.
Absolutely. And you may have not known that I work for Apple Incorporated and you gave me the Innovative Pioneer Award in 2017 at the Black Mill Achievements. So I'm looking forward to hearing back from your office. My email is directed at housecallwy.com.
Well, why don't you talk to Aaron, who's on, send, send a message to Aaron Sapinski. He'll put you in touch with Marcy Patterson and we'll make sure that you get a sit down in the next couple of weeks.
Now let's go back to Eric for some written questions.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, we have several questions that have been submitted, so I'll read off some of those and then we'll go back to the attendees who actually want to ask questions directly. Michael Rivera had a question. It is, can we have funds from the American Rescue Act to provide financial assistance for brown and black businesses in Milwaukee? Also, can we finally use some of those funds to fix the lead pipe replacement that is very much needed in the city of Milwaukee? So those are his questions.
So both very good questions. And let me, before we go onto that, I just, I want to go back to the Kahoots model here. Just to touch on this, operated by a community health clinic and funded through the police department, Kahoots accounts for just 2% of the department's $66 million annual budget. So it looks like they're putting about 1.3 million into Kahoots in Portland. I have proposed an increase in our Violence Prevention Office of a million and a half, I think, in the package that we submitted. That would put us around four or five million. So as a percentage, we're not that, we're not that far off this. So, but again, I'm very eager to hear what you have to say. But I just wanted to, as I read this, it's not that they have $66 million. They have 2% of the department's $66 million annual budget, just again to clarify that. But, but again, I'm eager to have you come in and talk to Marcy and Aaron. So with this question, and the gist of it was, again, I apologize because that caught my attention when you used that number. Just give me the, the, the final question you were asking again, I apologize. So I can answer directly.
Yeah, the question is, will funds from the American Rescue Act be used to provide financial assistance for black and brown businesses and also to help fix the lead pipe replacement in the city?
So I'd say yes for the first question, and we have done that already. I think we gave out over, what was Dennis? I don't know if you have that number at your fingertips or Aaron, if you have that number at your fingertips. But using the CARES Act money, it was north of $10 million that we put back into the community. We felt that the federal government through its packages was helping the large businesses. That was geared towards the smaller ones. So we put about $7 million for restart. They were going to put in through our program, $15 million we used from the small business portion of restart last year. So we are very, very interested in continuing to do that. In terms of the lead pipes, we are looking very, very closely, not at the art money, but at the infrastructure money. Because consulting with Senator Baldwin, consulting with Congresswoman Moore and others, that is the place where we think that we're going to be able to get dollars, significant dollars to deal with the lead pipe issue. We will be using, hopefully if the council approves it, some of the art money to deal with the lead paint problem. Because that is obviously a very serious issue as well. So I want to use both pots of money, the art money primarily for lead paint and I want to use the infrastructure money primarily for lead pipe replacement. So again, the answer is yes, we want to use the federal money, but different pots of money based on what's eligible.
And the next question is from Amanda Swan. Her question is, what is your first priority for spending? And will there be any discussion or emphasis on defunding the police and distributing that money elsewhere in the 2022 budget?
Well, ironically, and I think a lot of people on this call aren't going to like this, but what I have said consistently is the entity that is most responsible for funding the police in Milwaukee is the Republican Legislature. And what I mean by that, I know there are people on this call who are unhappy that there was not a $25 million or $75 million cut to the police department. Our budget last year was maybe $400,000 or less than it was the year before, but that translated into 160 fewer police officers. So what has happened is because there has been no increase in the amount of money we've received from the state, at some point, it's going to affect every portion of city government and it has. So that our police strength has gone down significantly over the last few years, not to fund a lot of programs that people on this call would like to be funded, funded or that I would like to fund, but because the state has not given us the money. So we will continue again this year to try to do what we can that we don't. I don't want to see another 160 million, I'm sorry, I don't want to see another 160 police officers eliminated from the department because we're down 160 or actually more than that over the last couple of years. And we have that problem. Again, I'm going back to reckless driving and the violence. We have to have a level of, of a police department to help us deal with those issues.
Next. And next question, actually, there's a couple of questions from Elizabeth Caldwell. First one was, will Milwaukee consider suing the state of Wisconsin for the unfair sales tax sharing? And her other question is about the police department. It takes up a large portion of the budget. The question is, what value does the police department bring to the city to deserve half the budget?
If I thought we could win in a lawsuit against a suit, I mean, against a state, I would go that direction. I don't think we could win that lawsuit. They, they hold the cards. They're the ones that make the state laws. And so they're the ones, it's political pressure. I will say this, Governor Evers, in both of his budgets, has attempted to increase the amount we received in shared revenue. And in this past budget, he attempted, he proposed allowing us to have a sales tax. So I'm very thankful to Governor Evers. In both instances, the Republican Legislature took it all out. So that's the problem we have. It's that the gerrymandering that's occurred, it's the anti Milwaukee sentiment in the legislature. And, and you can see this, for example, in the, in the funding for buses, where they essentially took money from only two bus systems, Milwaukee's bus system and Madison's bus system because of their animosity towards Madison and Milwaukee. In terms of the police budget, again, you have seen fewer and fewer police officers because we simply don't have the dollars. And I hear from people who want to have it, I think if, if someone, if there's a crime, people call the police. It's, it's not as though people are not calling the police. The police continue to get a lot of calls and I understand where people are frustrated when the police don't come fast enough. So I am concerned about that issue as well.
And I'll read one more question and then turn it back to Bill to go through attendees' direct questions. This one's from Connor Williams with Community Advocates. And his question is, are there plans to make permanent the mayor's expansion of Earn and Learn? We need to get more people working to help stabilize our city.
Well, again, as some of you may know, I absolutely love the Earn and Learn program and I do because when I raise money for it, it's interesting. And think about this for every single one of you. I, I call businesses around the city, I call individuals and organizations. And, and the question I start out with is, what was your first job? And the reason I start with that question is I have never met an adult in my life who cannot instantaneously tell me their first job. Everybody, everybody can instantaneously tell me their first job. And, and I want to make the connection as to how important that job was to them, whether they liked it or hated it, how they got it. And unfortunately, there are too many kids who live in neighborhoods where we don't have as many jobs. And so I feel that we have a moral obligation to create those jobs. And so for many, many years, I've made this a high priority for me. Last year, we didn't, we were not, because of the COVID, be able to have the full fledged program. This year, actually, the first allocation and the only allocation we have made from the American Rescue Plan dollars has been $3.8 million for the Summer Youth Employment Program. That's how strongly I feel. That's how strongly the council feels that that's money well spent. And so I can tell you, as long as I'm mayor, that is going to be a priority of mine to see what we can do to give jobs for kids in the summertime. If we had a permanent funding source from the state, that would obviously be, be good. But I think it's something that, that any mayor should make as a priority, the funding for that program.
Okay, going back to some of our speakers, next on the list is Paul Vang. And Paul will be followed by Sharlin Moore. So Paul, I'm going to unmute you right now. If you could unmute yourself, then the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Paul Vang. My pronouns are he/him. I live in the ninth Aldermanic District and I work for the Mong American Women's Association, also known as HOWA. In the middle of the pandemic, in the spring of 2020, a team of young organizers and I were making calls and sending texts in order to urge members of our Southeast Asian community here in Milwaukee to fill out their census. We urged everybody that, that we talked to to fill out their census because as the reasoning goes, their accounts would lead to more money and more resources that would be invested in their community. And while the census data was released last week, which showed that Southeast Asians are the second grossest, fastest growing community in Milwaukee, our communities are still fighting for resources and are still fighting for real political power and representation. It is my opinion that we shouldn't wait on the federal government for these investments and resources, but we should be demanding our city to do more. So these reasons, the Mong American Women's Association supports Liberate MKE's demand for a participatory budgeting process. Our Southeast Asian community has virtually no political representation in the city of Milwaukee. And a participatory budgeting process would bring decision making power into our own community's hands. Also, in our domestic violence advocacy work, we know that the police do not keep our community safe. The police would not have kept Lee safe, nor would they have kept Amara Banks or her daughter safe. That is why we support Liberate MKE's demand to divest $75 million from the Milwaukee Police Department and invest in things that we know keep communities safe. Things like housing and more emergency shelter for women, girls, and queer and trans people, as well as mental health services and violence prevention services that are embedded in the community and that are culturally specific. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your comments.
Okay, next up is Sharlin Moore, followed by Connor Williams. Sharlin, you are unmuted and the floor is yours.
Sharlin, you are unmuted, and the floor is yours. Sharlin? Okay, we'll move on to Connor Williams. Connor, you're up, take it away. Looks like he's dropped off. Moving on, we've got Maria Poradek, followed by Lee Henderson Tatum. Maria. Maria's dropped off. Lee Henderson Tatum has also dropped off. Alexandria Harper King, you're up, you're unmuted. The floor is yours, to be followed by Raisha Farmer.
Good evening. My name is Alexandria HK. I am a community organizer in the city of Milwaukee. I have worked with organizations like Motive Milwaukee and now Liberate MKE is what I am supporting. I just want to address a few things. First and foremost, I do want to state the demands of defunding the police more. I am within community, I'm on each side, whether you guys view it as a more tolerable community or intolerable community, I'm within all of those streets. And the issue that I'm seeing consistently is that there's a lack of resources. I heard Mayor Barrett say earlier that he would like to see things changed, you know, referring to the crime, referring to the driving. But the thing about it is, is that in order to see this change in more simpler terms, something, speak you guys' language, if you poke the bear, the bear will attack. So if you're taking away resources within the community, you're not giving resources to the community, you're going to get exactly what you think you're going to get. And that's that people are going to kill, people are going to steal, and people are going to commit crimes. So I want to address more specifically the lack of housing. People are literally on their last legs looking for housing, and we're putting more money into police that are not helping. I've been in connection with police many times, and they've done more harm than they've done good. So I just genuinely do not understand why we are giving them so much money. As someone else came up and stated, they are policing their own communities, which I believe needs to be taken more of a look at than us putting more money into the police department. Back to the funding for housing, I think it's ridiculous that so many people are waiting two, three, even four months or just being completely denied housing, but we're talking about funding other areas that are not benefiting the community. If you guys want some kind of change, you need to actually be the change. It's not enough to say, well, we're putting money here, we're doing this. The community is not seeing that. I also think it's kind of pathetic that a lot of the people that have a say-so and that are receiving the money are not actually in community. Just because you police the community does not believe, does not mean you are actually in our community or we consider you community. So that's pretty much what I have to add. I feel like there needs to be changes to the housing here. I feel like the police is receiving way too much money with the lack of change. And I believe that we can talk all day about what the city of Milwaukee children, thank you, what the city of Milwaukee's children are doing and the youth are doing. But if you're taking away things that make them better, why would they utilize anything that you're not giving them? It just does not make any sense. And that's my piece.
Well, I appreciate your comments, and let me just comment on them. Earlier today, I was at a ribbon cutting for the old Journal Sentinel building, which is now going to have apartments for M A T C students. And that's a transformation. The city was a partner in that, as was WEADA through the state. And we did so because I agree with you. We do have the need for more housing. I've made it public that I want to have 10,000 newer refurbished housing units over the next 10 years. And we're trying to do that. And with our money, for example, in the summer package that I presented, we put close to $30 million into housing, including about half of that to our Public Housing Authority. And that was to help them complete the project. I don't know how many of you have seen the West Lawn Gardens. It's the housing on 60th, between 60th and and about 68th Street, just south of Silver Spring. This is public housing, so it's for people with very low income. And and I do believe that we have to have quality respectable housing for people of all income. So if you haven't done so, take a drive-through there. And I think that you will agree with me that this housing, which is there for low-income people, is very respectful and it's very good housing. At the same time, I'm going to go back to this, and I can't emphasize this enough. I can't, when I talk to a family member of someone who has a relative who died as a victim of drag racing in the city of Milwaukee, I have to be able to respond to them. And if they're asking me for help to try to do what I can to control reckless driving, why would I say no? They've lost a loved one. And I think we have to realize that that's that's real stuff, too. That's real stuff we're dealing with. And some of it, I want to go into engineering so that we can have it more difficult for people to have these drag races and crazy driving. But if someone's using their car, two people are driving down the street 120 miles an hour in a race, and two innocent people get killed, we as a society have to respond to that. I just can't say it's it's not the city's problem. It is our problem. It's all of our problems. So I just, I just want you to know that I feel a responsibility to respond to those individuals as well.
Okay, next up is Raisha, Raisha Farmer, to be followed by Cortez Brown. Raisha, I'm going to unmute you right now. And if you can unmute yourself, the floor is yours.
Yes, I am Raisha Farmer. My pronouns are she/her's. I currently live in Alderwoman, Mile Lake Coggs District. And I want to uplift the African-American Roundtable's demand to divest $75 million from MPD and reinvest that money into housing cooperatives, public health, and community programs that keep us safe. As a black child growing up in 5206, my mother had to outsource childhood recreational activities and development for me. I'd go to Marshall Hamilton and Vincent High Schools to learn to play tennis and swim, opportunities that my local schools, Benjamin Franklin Elementary School and Rufus King High Schools could not offer. I'd go to the Northridge Theater because my neighborhood didn't have movie theaters, let alone theaters that allowed me to fellowship with folks who looked like me or to do that in safe, clean, or well-equipped theaters like in the suburbs. Those things informed the work that I began this past March on Milwaukee's same far northwest side. In August, I canvassed a condominium project on 91st and Brown Deer. And over the past few months, I've been holding meetings and interviewing folks who live on or work on Milwaukee's far northwest side. Overwhelmingly, I've heard folks express a disappointment in housing and community divestment as places like the Northridge Theater no longer exist and programs at Vincent High School appear to be significantly defunded over the years. As someone who knew what folks not living on the far northwest side could gain from those resources, I can only imagine what a disservice is done to the folks who live in the area but don't have those enrichment opportunities that existed when I was a kid. As I continue my work, including today, I learn more about where the city is spending money. That nearly 44% of the city's budget goes to Milwaukee Police Department, an entity that the same folks on the far northwest side want to see defunded due to violence they experienced from MPD. I learned that in contrast, local communities receive 2% to 3% of the city's budget. No wonder there are no places on the far northwest side for families to gather, to fellowship, to learn skills and develop their children. No wonder the children on that side of town are breaking into cars. This is why the city's budget must reflect a $75 million divestment from police and at least a $25 million reallocation of those funds to community housing that enables recreational activities and community spaces for families. And just to be clear, this is not a question. This is a demand as a person who lives in the city. So for the sake of time, so that other folks can talk on this call, no need to respond until you take some more time after this call to think about my comment. Let's just go on to the next person. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we've got Cortez Brown. And then we're going to go back to Eric for some more written questions. So Cortez, I'll unmute you. And if you can unmute yourself, go ahead and ask your question.
All right. To keep it simple, my question really is to Mayor Barrett, are you ready to win? And I know that's quite simple, but I really want you to think about that. The reason why I want you to think about that is because last year in 2020, when the city was in uproar with all the protesting and stuff, it was a video that came out that you was a part of with, at time, Chief Michael Bronson. And y'all was talking about issues in regards to police and community relations, right? So I seen the email, which is talk to mpd@Milwaukee.gov, so you know it's official. And I emailed y'all, and I'm about to read it to you. And that email states, I am Cortez Brown. I recently seen a video on Facebook which led me to this email. The video, which contains Mayor Tom Barrett of Milwaukee, discusses issues facing the city in regard to police and community relations. This video stood out to me because back in 2015, I was selected to participate in the STOP program, which stands for Students Talking It Over With Police, which allows students to engage with real police officers in a school setting. I graduated from Milwaukee Collegiate Academy, now known as Howard Fuller Collegiate Academy in 2016. And because of the STOP program, I decided to pursue criminal justice when I attended college at the University of Wisconsin-Platteville. I'm aware that issues occurred that put an end to the program, but I believe it helped more students than hurt. It's going to take a collective effort to restore the hurt that transpired since the inception of this country. I believe I'm a strong enough leader to bring real change to the city of Milwaukee because I stood on the front line for my community, for my pools, for my family, for God, and myself. I believe that we, if we as a people are able to acknowledge, embrace, and accept what the past means to our present, we can then take proactive approaches to build a great future of love and peace. I'm only 22, but I experienced a lot in life to know right from wrong, good from evil. I believe with a positive shift in the mind, the goals on which we want to see a better policing community relations can and will fall into fruition. I love an opportunity to address the city with my ideas because I am for real change. I'm from the bottoms of the bottoms, and I'd rather us live in faith, not fear, and not do whatever it takes to bring real change to the city.
Cortez, 20 seconds.
Cool. So the reason why I asked, are you ready to win? Is because now I'm working as a professional at my alma mater, at Howard Fuller Collegiate Academy. We're doing a block party tomorrow. I would love if you come, see me in person, come check out my classroom, Mayor Barrett.
Well, make sure we get the information so I know what time it's at. If I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if my calendar is tomorrow. So let me see, it's not out of the question. So let's get the information, all right?
All right, let's go back to Eric for some written questions.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now this next question is from D P Delesio Parsons. And the question is, what do you see as the root causes of the homicide statistics that you cited? When what percentage of the 2022 budget would you like to see as police spending? And finally, what other sections of the budget do you see as directly responding to violence?
Well, good question. I wish I knew what the root cause is. I know that there's been a lot of people who know each other that do it. I know there's been a significant amount of domestic violence that's been involved this year. But I think a lot of it is people, sometimes it feels gone bad. Sometimes it's just people who feel disrespectful. I wish I, if I knew, believe me, I'd do everything I could to to lower that number. I don't have in my mind an ideal number for what the percentage of the budget should be. Ideally, I would like it lower. But again, I also look at the number of calls we receive and the anger people have when those calls are not responded to. So it's always, always, always a balancing act as we try to figure out what what the best thing to do. We do look at other funds, and we are blessed this year of having some additional funds from the federal government. Now, some of that is going to cover lost revenues that we lost as a result of the pandemic. But my priorities for that spending remain housing, employment, dealing with the lead issues. That means both paint and and the infrastructure, early, early childhood education. Those are some of the priorities that I have as we're going forward as to how we want to spend significant amount of that money.
Okay, the next question is from Angelique Sharp. And she is the Director of the Villard Avenue Business Improvement District. She wants to know if DPW funds are specifically allocated for infrastructure improvements in marginalized neighborhoods like Villard Avenue? They've done a lot of organizing and completed a historic charrette design.
I would say yes, there are essentially three zones in the city that we have for DPW spending. And what I would say for anybody is, take a look, and it's it's working its way through Congress right now, we're watching it very closely, is the infrastructure bill. Because I'm hoping that we'll be able to benefit greatly from that infrastructure bill as well. So I'd like to see those numbers increase for all parts of the city, but certainly including the Villard Avenue area.
Okay, and then we have a question, and I have to apologize if I don't get the name right. Lidia Villazais or Villazais has a question. Are there any collaborative efforts between the city and the county advocating for a better sales tax for Milwaukee?
Oh, yes, there are. And the County Executive and I, along with the County Council President and the Chair of the County Board, have been working several years closely together, collaborating. So we're singing out of the same hymn, though, because they've got issues at the county, we've got issues at the state, and we literally have been joined at the hip trying to get it done together.
And just to follow up from that, Lidia also had a question about is money being put into better education for kids? And what part of the budget is going to be used to increase different youth programs in our community?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, the first amount of money we allocated from the federal money was for summer youth employment. And again, we, we, the city, get about $394 million in the rescue plan. The county gets maybe half of that for its share. Milwaukee Public Schools, the number I saw, I think, was north of $700 million. So they're funded separately, and they've got a significant amount of money to help them with programs there, which I think is great.
Okay, I'll do one more question and then turn it over to Bill. This is a question from Paul Mozina. He says, the COVID-19 vaccines do not prevent infection, nor do they, nor do they prevent an infected vaccinated person from spreading, spreading the virus. Vaccines will not get us to herd immunity. Why isn't the Milwaukee Health Department developing prophylactic and early treatment protocols to help people protect lives of the people in the city?
Since this began in March of 2020, I've been following the lead of the CDC and the state. They believe that vaccines are effective. Obviously, we've seen some issues, and they've talked just in the last 24 hours about booster shots, and people are immunocompromised. But I do believe that vaccines are effective, very much so.
Okay, then we'll turn it over to Bill, see if there's any more attendees who have questions. Thanks, Eric. Next up, going down the list, is Christine Grabi, to be followed by Emily Munoz. So Christine, I'm going to unmute you right now. And are you going to mute yourself and take it away?
Hi, I have a comment followed by a few questions. I'm going to start with the comment. So Mayor Barrett, I've noticed you doing something this evening, which is very problematic. Okay, every time the subject of police brutality is raised, you change the topic to talking about reckless driving. Okay, that's called changing the channel. And you're using it as a strategy to avoid a conversation about police brutality. We need to have a real conversation about police brutality in this city. And the conversation about reckless driving, that is a separate issue. Okay, that's my comment. Now, my first question is this. The mayor has said several times that he wants to see alternative solutions other than policing to crime and violence. But when the police receive such a large chunk of the pie, how can he expect to have any credibility with the public that he's serious about wanting to look for alternative solutions when he's not putting the money where his mouth is? My second question is, if he could speak to the credibility of the police in general, the Milwaukee Police Department has a very long, 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 long history of misconduct, racist policing, brutality, et cetera, going back at least to the 1950s, 1958 with the killing of Daniel Bell, up through yesterday with the killing that happened on 27th and Wright. And finally, my final question for Mayor Barrett is, I know he has a Black Lives Matter sign out in front of his house, but if he could speak to what it is that he feels his budget is doing in service of black people? Thank you.
Sure, I'll, I'll start with the last one, and I'll talk a little bit about the summer package that I presented to the County Council that it will take up on September 2nd. Some of the issues are, I think, what some people on this call would consider to be mundane issues. But to me, they're real issues. And for example, the fact that I put a lot of money into housing at at West Lawn Gardens, a location that I think is probably, probably over 90% African-American. We put several million dollars into We put several million dollars into problems we're having with basic life support services, ambulances in particular in areas of the city that are predominantly African American. $10 million that we put into streetlights, again, in neighborhoods, because I think when you're looking for alternatives to police, actually, streetlights can be somewhat helpful. Lights deter people from doing bad things. And so, so that's another area where we're putting funding. So whether it's housing, whether it's light paint, whether it's early education, all of those are areas that I think are benefiting African Americans who live in this city. We put a significant amount into job training, and that goes to Employ Milwaukee. The vast, vast majority of people Employ Milwaukee serves and trains are both black and brown. And so, everything that we put into our summer package for the American Rescue Plan, we viewed through an equity lens, because I am mindful of the racial inequities and the history of racism and the problems that we have as a community. And so I take that very, very seriously. In, in terms of the police, again, if you don't want me talking about reckless driving, I'll talk about homicides, I'll talk about shootings. I, I talked to a lot of people who are victims of these crimes, and, and they want a response. And so I know that everybody on this phone call doesn't agree with that, but, but it's difficult for me to say we're not going to respond if you're a victim of a crime. And people want, they want to have someone respond.
Okay, next up is Emily Munoz, and then followed by, we're going to go back to Charlene Moore. I think there was some operator error on my side when we were trying to bring you up before. So, but first, we're going to go to Emily Munoz. I'm going to unmute you now. And if you're going to mute yourself, take it away.
All right, so I just have a comment. I'm speaking today in support of a $75 million cut to MPD's budget. Over the past several years, the community has been demanding a cut to the budget to fund things that will actually keep us safe, and that demand remains the same and will remain the same until this council takes action to actualize a budget that prioritizes the health and safety of its constituents. So we want housing and investment into public health, and instead, we get millions of dollars invested into policing and surveilling us each year. Investing nearly half the budget into policing is a very violent and immoral way to spend taxpayer dollars when they do very little to actually keep us safe. Instead, they actively harm black and brown communities. And unfortunately, we don't need to look very far into our history to see that, because MPD murdered a man yesterday, who was a 42-year-old black man, whose name was Broderick Shelton Jr. His family needed him, his community needed him, and his life was taken by MPD. And we're hearing that Broderick suffered from mental health issues. So imagine a community that is so under-resourced that the only support we can offer someone experiencing a mental health crisis is death at the hands of the police. That's the state of Milwaukee right now. All we have to offer are these death-making institutions, and that's police prisons and jails. So it is the mayor's responsibility, the council's responsibility. It's their moral imperative to put forward a budget that is life-affirming and that will create resources that our community so desperately needs and deserves. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we're going to try Charlene Moore again. I'm going to unmute you right now, and you should be able to speak. So go ahead, Charlene.
Yes, thank you so very much. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to just provide some commentary for today's budget session. My name is Charlene Moore. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. And I'm speaking on behalf of Urban Underground, which is a youth leadership and social justice organization, as well as Youth Justice Milwaukee, which advocates for the closure of youth prisons. I know there's a lot of, you know, things on the list that we want to fund, and all of them are, you know, extremely important. So I have a comment and a question. Some of the areas that we would love to see, you know, funding or created, number one, it would be fantastic to have a participatory budget process. Also, you know, I've been working with young people, and it's been so challenging finding them housing. So it, I would love to have housing, particularly for opportunity youth, who are young people that are disconnected from school and work, ages 16 to 24. Someone mentioned this before around year round, funding for employment opportunities such as earn and learn for young people. We, I was, it was awesome to see so many positions available this summer. Thank you for providing funding, you know, for that. We hope that it continues. I hope that we can get more money also into, and Mayor, you mentioned this, the Office of Violence Prevention. I definitely think we need more dollars invested and ramped up so that the communities that need it the most can. I know there's some work that's also been done around reckless driving. I hope that we can provide more opportunities for organizations that are really working on that issue to really galvanize together to find ways to curtail it. It's going to, it's going to have to definitely be an all-hands-on-deck approach. And also, for focusing on prevention, I would love to have some budgetary dollars for nonprofit organizations, particularly those grassroots organizations that are on the ground, working with young people, supporting them and engaging them, particularly during those out-of-school time. My question to you, Mayor, is seeing that we have such a shortfall. You meant you saw, you shared with us the grid, which had the two lines on there. Where, what are your thoughts on spending the ARPA dollars? To, you know, is it to close the budgetary shortfalls? Like, what is going to be of priority to you to make sure that, you know, even though we have these grave deficits, how do you work with that? Thank you so much.
And as I mentioned, so we got $394 million, and we're going to get it in two tranches, as it's described. One for $194 million that we've already received. The second is $194 million that we will receive no sooner than May of next year. So we're focusing on the first $194 million. As I've said several times, we've spent $3.8 million of that for summer youth employment. The estimates are for 2020, I think, and Dennis, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we've calculated that our lost revenue was $53 million. And that can be replenished from that money. Now, some of that money will go to close the gaps we have in our 2021 budget and to fund some things like the reckless driving initiative, for example. And I put together in July, in early July, what I call the summer package that I presented to the council. And it had the biggest ticket items in there were money for Employ Milwaukee, that's job training, money for housing, and that included a significant amount for West Lawn, money for streetlights to deal with some streetlight issues. We had a million and a half, I think, in there for the Office of Violence Prevention, which you mentioned, several million dollars again for the ambulance problem that we have, some money for early education. In September, I'm hoping to introduce a second package, if you will. I'm hopeful that the council will approve my first package. My second package, and, and let me go to the reckless driving I mentioned several times. So you can either be supportive or know why you're mad at me. My reckless driving initiative has $5 million in it that goes to the Department of Public Works to deal with issues like narrowing streets and making it safer for pedestrians and things like that. It has a little over a million that goes for law enforcement, some for overtime for police officers to deal with reckless driving, some for motorcycles and things like that. So, so it has a five-to-one split there. As I mentioned, the, the Office of Violence Prevention gets a million and a half. I think Dennis can correct me if I'm wrong on that number. And so in September, I'm planning on putting together another package that we're working on right now. And the things that we really are focusing on in that one include more housing, a significant amount of money, and there's, there's a wide range of programs. For example, and, and we had some money in, in the first package of this one. A program that I absolutely love is the Neighborhood Improvement Program. So people who've been in their homes in low-income areas and need house repairs, rather than forcing them out of their homes, giving them loans that don't have to be repaid until the house is sold. And when we announced it, I was at the home of a couple, and I think they're probably in their 70s. They've been in the home for 25 years on a fixed income. But a lot, they lived over near Sancho's Hospital, allowed them to, to stay in their home. Those are the types of things we're trying to do with that. The lead paint issue I mentioned, again, the goal is to use a significant amount of dollars for the lead paint issues in the plan that I want to put forth in September. And, and then again, to see what we're going to get for the lead pipe replacements, because we believe that there's going to be some money for that as well.
If I could, I, I just want to give an updated number on the violence prevention. It is $3 million that you have in there. And there are some other programs, like for cleaning, business restart money as well, eviction help, in addition to the money that we've been providing for eviction prevention, that is a direct payment of rent through another pot of money. We have also provided some help from the legal side as well in the mayor's package.
And that goes for write the council so that people can have an attorney when they've been served eviction papers.
Okay, the next speaker is somebody who shows up as Villard Avenue Bid. And then Villard Avenue Bid is going to be followed by Lisa Jones. So whoever is, goes by Villard Avenue Bid, I'm unmuting you now. And if you're going to mute yourself, you can go ahead and ask your question.
Hello, this is the Villard Avenue Business Improvement District, again, asking a question just really about specifically for Villard Avenue. Mayor, you know, we partnered on the Historic Virtual Charrette. We have, we initiated going to DPW asking for the rapid implementation. I am specifically looking for funds, infrastructure funds for Villard Avenue. Can you guarantee some funding either from ARPA or this 2022 budget?
Why don't, why don't we get your, if somebody can connect with you so we can follow up? There might be something in the works already. I'm, I'm assuming the answer is yes, but I don't know what the source is, but I can't say yes until I know exactly what you're talking about. Let's, I, I.
Can we set up a meeting? Can we set up a meeting?
Yeah, I'm an admirer of your bid, so let's, let's follow up on that, okay?
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up is Lisa Jones, followed by Alex Larson. Lisa, you are unmuted. You're going to mute yourself and go ahead and ask your question.
Good evening, Mayor Barrett and Director Gacarino. My name is Lisa Jones, the Lead Organizer at MICA, Milwaukee Inner City Congrations Ally for Hope. My pronouns is she and her. Two years ago, I testified at the municipal building. And when I spoke, I spoke about the analogy of how we need to do investments in our community instead of continuing to do the, the defense in policing that has not made us safer and continues to be problematic. And all we need to see is the issues that have happened in our Milwaukee Police Department over the last two years and the lack of trust that has come between the community. And I also talked about how we already, we had a plan out of the Health Department, and that needs to be fully invested in the Office of Violence Prevention with the Blueprint for Peace. And it concerns me that we still, at this time, are investing so much money in a police department, and those numbers still have not gone down dramatically where we can invest in the Health Department and other things that we know that are needed in our city. The urgency is of now, right now, Mayor Barrett. We need that $75 million to invest in our Health Department and other things to, to make our, our citizens safe. We need to build a healthy community. Milwaukee is not healthy. There are too far too many citizens who are not healthy because of systemic poverty and other issues of systemic racism that continues to plague our community. In response to some of the other callers asking about similar questions, you kept bringing up reckless driving and also talked about the violence in our cities. Well, what if we put the investment in and so that we could prevent that reckless driving to begin with and prevent that violence? And those are the kinds of strategies that we need. We need real strategies and real solutions. We do not need to continue to put Band-Aids on problems. The budget needs to be invested more in communities. And unfortunately, we are not putting enough money into the things that would make us safer, like more money for, for housing. And so I'm asking you, Mayor Barrett, that will, will you continue to do the same thing that has been done the last two or three years? Or will you be willing to be the one who invests really in Milwaukee so that we really can become really healthy and that people will really be, have a investment into what the budget says and what it does? We cannot rely on just the ARPA funding. We need to rely on what we have here in Milwaukee, and we cannot always depend upon the state. We need to look to see what we're doing with the own funds that we have. We need to invest in Milwaukee so we can build a healthy Milwaukee. Thank you.
Thank you. And the only thing I would say, you mentioned the Blueprint for Peace, and we did an analysis for a lot of the things that the Blueprint for Peace recommends spending for. And if you look at the summer package, and so I would ask you to take a look at our summer package and see if there are things in there that really are consistent with the Blueprint for Peace. That's what, so take a look at that, because you might find things in there that you're happy with. You might find things in there you're not happy with, but I would ask each of you to take a look at that as well.
Okay, next up is Alec Larson, and then we're going to go back to Eric for another written question. And then I've got three more speakers lined up after that, and then I think that'll take care of everybody. So Alex, unmuting you now, and the floor is yours.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to start this off by endorsing the demand that through this budgeting process, we divest $75 million from the police with the reinvestment into our community by allocating $50 million to public health and another $25 million going to cooperative housing. I wanted to start off with this demand because I'd like to take the rest of this time to address some of the disingenuous pushback that this demand brings. The first is the talk that will happen about the year-over-year crime increase that the city sees. In discussing this increase, why is it never brought up that we haven't actually seen a major divestment in funds from the police? So even with our expenditures high as it's been, this increase still occurred. Because the truth of the matter is, is that the police don't prevent crime, they respond to it. So we can sit here and we can keep giving MPD 46% of the budget, but if we really want to positively transform the city, we would invest in the community to address socioeconomic factors which cause, which lead to crime in the first place. This is how we need to think about public safety, because the safest communities do not have the most police. They have the most resources. The other pushback that gets used is, well, my constituents aren't worried about defunding the police. They're worried about problems X, Y, and Z. But the elected officials that say this know the knowledge that we have to have a balanced budget. So these issues, X, Y, and Z, can never be rightfully addressed if we keep giving so much money to the police. So my question for you, Mayor, is are we going to keep doing the same things expecting a different result? Or are we going to actually invest in our community so that it can thrive? Thank you for your time.
Sure, and I, I'll simply say that I think virtually every single issue that people have wanted me to invest in, from housing to public health to employment, I have put forth, or I am putting forth initiatives with multimillion-dollar budgets in those areas. And I'll continue to do so, because I think they are important.
And if I could clarify something, the chart we showed with departments is the percentage of the total departments, not of the budget. If you look at the Police Department budget as a, as a percent of the total budget, it's about 17%.
Okay, now let's go back to Eric for the final written question, and then we'll bring it back to the final three speakers, who are Bree Flowers, Leland Pan, and James Bell. So Eric, back to you.
Yeah, the last question we have is from Lydia Villazays. I think I had another question earlier, but her question here is, what money would be given to small Latino community organizations and neighborhoods to make them safe and to increase physical activity programs for kids on the South Side? to make them safe and to increase physical activity programs for kids on the South Side?
Well, I can tell you that we've worked very, very closely with the UCC and with Journey House, the Christian Center, and a number of other organizations that serve the South Side and Boys and Girls Club, and will continue to do that. I think that's money well spent.
All right, let's bring it back for our final three speakers. We're going to go with Bree Flowers next, followed by Leland Pan. So Bree, unmuting you now, and take it away.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I would kind of say, I feel like it was very disrespectful the way you're kind of using these victims of crime to sway away from talking about one of the real problem of Milwaukee Police Department. Second of all, these crimes that you're speaking of, they stem from poverty. So my question is for, what are you going to do to directly impact these peoples who are facing, you know, who are living in poverty and, you know, are going and doing crime as a result of that? Lastly, you keep talking about reckless driving, and you are forgetting to mention that the Milwaukee Police Department actually plays a huge role in this, as they are chasing people all the time. They are running red lights, driving recklessly. They've also taken the life of a great educator and mentor, Mr. Caesar Stinson, and also have hit my, almost hit my brother, I see was walking home from school one day. So if we're going to talk about reckless driving, we have to talk about it in its entirety and that the big role that Milwaukee Police Department plays in it. And lastly, one thing that kind of stood out to me recently was that you said that three million dollars is going towards crime prevention, which doesn't make sense that we're paying less for crime prevention than, than to the responders who are going to report these crimes, pretty much, because as we all know, that the police do not do anything in regards to crime. They do not stop crime. So why are we paying more for people to report to crimes and not for crime prevention? Yeah, that's all I had.
And I appreciate that. And I'm glad, Dennis, because I was trying to think before how my numbers were off. The summer package that I had proposed, which is still pending, and I know people don't like we mention reckless driving, but again, I hear about it all the time. We put three million dollars into the budget, into the, into the summer package for the Office of Violence Prevention. And we put, I think, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for police overtime. So three million dollars over two point five, I'm sorry, three million dollars over two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We're basically putting ten times more in the summer package that I introduced for violence prevention as we are for police overtime for, for reckless driving. So I do believe there's a value in trying to address these issues. And I, I believe in balance. I think it's important to have balance. Let's go to the next call.
All right, on to our final two speakers. We've got Leland Pan, followed by James Bell. So Leland, unmuting you now. The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. My name is Leland Pan. I live in Alder Murphy's District. I'm a teacher here in Milwaukee. And I wasn't originally planning to speak, but I think a couple of things didn't sit well with me. One is you mentioned a response to a written question about not, not knowing really what the root cause of our homicides are, but I've heard a lot of testimony that explains thoroughly the role of, you know, the systemic poverty and segregation and exploitation that goes on in Milwaukee. I think it's, you know, it's important to note that these factors that are driving our crime are on purpose, that are exploitative. They are, why, the suburbs are wealthy at the expense of Milwaukee. And I understand this is a bit out of your control, right? You can't control Brookfield residents paying their taxes or not to us. But I think it's disingenuous to act like what's going on in our communities is the fault directly, you know, is somehow going to be solved by police when these are systemic factors that the police don't address. You know, having, also with the reckless driving, I understand, it is absolutely a big concern and one that I see as a resident and as a teacher, but I think we dehumanize the folks who are, who are doing this when the very same suburban communities that are wealthy off the backs of Milwaukee drive recklessly and face no criminal punishment, right? Like, I was a teen in the suburbs when I grew up, and we drove recklessly as well. And, but we also had access to fun things to do. We also had access to resources, right? In fact, if you're wealthy, you can turn your love of street racing into a career. You could turn it into being an Indy car driver. You have access to the Milwaukee Mile. You have access to go-kart tracks, right? So in my opinion, the funding you're putting towards the police in this reckless driving initiative would address reckless driving more if it literally built a go-kart track that our, our kids and community members could, could go attend. So they have fun things to do in their free time, so they don't feel like they're constantly policed and exploited and profiled by our police. So, you know, just speaking as somebody who works in Milwaukee with youth here, I just really don't appreciate the dehumanization in our public policy rhetoric around crime.
Well, I respectfully couldn't disagree with you more. I think, I wish I had the answer to some of these questions, but I, I can't make believe that there's not problems. I just can't do that. And of course, as I repeatedly said, we are making massive investments in housing, in employment, in dealing with the lead issues, in early education. All of those are issues that I think virtually every person who has mentioned they want investments in, those are areas where I am, I am proposing investments in those areas. So it's not as though I'm denying there's a problem. It's not as though I'm dehumanizing anybody. I'm trying to deal with it. I'm trying to use these resources as effectively as I can. But at the same time, I, I can't ignore some of the problems that we have. And so, of course, I know the police can't solve all the problems. And someone said, well, the police respond. They don't prevent, they respond. People do want the police to respond. That's, that's what I hear. The, the calls for the police are greatest in the neighborhoods where the crime is the greatest. And so, to the extent that we say to people in those neighborhoods, well, we're just not going to respond to your calls, I think that that would engender even more animosity. Do I think we need better police? Absolutely, yes. Do I think we need more police who are part of our community? Absolutely, yes. Do I think there are police who, who misbehave? Absolutely, yes. And, and I think that it's our job to try to obviously get rid of those people who do not respect others in our community. So I'm going to continue to do that, but it's, it's a challenge. I'm not going to lie to anybody on this phone call. It's a challenge, and we're trying to do the best we can.
Okay, and last but not least, our final speaker, James Bell. James, you are unmuted. If you can unmute yourself, go ahead and ask your question.
Greetings, everybody. Thank you too for your time, Mayor Barrett. My name is James Bell, and I'm the director of an organization called, a nonprofit organization called House Call Foundation. And, and our job is really to support the endeavors of Mira, which I know Montreal Kane spoke a little bit earlier about Mira and, and all the work that we're doing in the community. There's a couple of questions I really have. Number one, we've reached out to your office several times and just to kind of figure out some times, some ways that we can connect with your, your office and let you know more about our endeavors and the technology that we've been working really hard on. It's been really hard to figure out the best way to do that. So that's one thing that really made a lot to us. But secondly, I mean, thinking of the ARPA funding, I think a lot of this discussions tonight have really centered around crime and, and mental health. And I think our organization is really uniquely equipped to address some of these needs through our technology and through collaboration with the police. I think it's a beautiful blend of just different solutions facing our city. And we just really want to understand, like, what we actually can do as we talk about, hey, we want to deploy these dollars to, to places. We have something that's specific that we think could bring a lot of help, and we're just wondering what's the best way to go about being positioned to receive the most funding or just getting in touch with your office.
Well, as I mentioned to Montreal, Aaron, I think is still on the phone call. So Aaron Sapinski touched base with Aaron Sapinski, and he'll set up something with Marcy so we can have, continue the dialogue. But I appreciate the work that you're doing very much.
And Mayor, that was our final speaker.
All right. Well, thank you all very, very much for attending. I appreciate your patience. We've got a lot of work to do, but the more we can work together, the, the better budget we can have. So I appreciate that, Dennis. Thank you. Scott, thank you for your interpretation there. We appreciate it very, very much. I hope you get a little rest, and thank you all for being here tonight. Thanks, Eric as well, Aaron, everybody else who's been involved in this. Have a great evening, everybody. Stay safe.